To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Certainly.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom. Joe Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Here.
Okay.
Role's complete.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support. We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Kalani. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnae, motion carries. Next up, approval of our January 11, 2018, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve January 11, 2018, meeting minutes.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Voit, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnae, motion carries. We have no public here this evening. Hopefully, they're all at home watching. So we'll move on to item 7A, which is site plan application number 17-019, Flagstar Bank. If you'd like to come up to the table, what we're going to do is we'll turn the floor over to Troy, our planner. Let him introduce the project. Anything you'd like to add? And then we'll run through the staff review letter real quick. Alright, Troy?
Thanks. The request is by Flagstar Bank to construct a new 2,900 square foot or drive-through facilities. The property is located at the from here, and it's at this corner location, right? It's not the entire piece going all the way up to this drive here. It's, there's a property line. I'll kind of zoom in on just that property. You can see it's right here that they're proposing to go. This project is part of a planned development for Ramco site. I'm going to go to page 29 here. And this is a copy of that pattern book. It's going to be a little annoying that BSNA wants to update, and of course, it'll have to reboot the whole computer, but that keeps popping up, so I apologize. This is a schematic of the pattern book for this planned development. And the area that we're looking at is in, kind of at the bottom of that. I'll zoom in on that a little bit. And you can see even when this planned development was approved, there was essentially, it's a little blurry, but there was a bank that was shown in this location on this property. And in fact, in 2008, this is a plan that was approved for a bank with a, with some three drive-through windows on the north side. Now, what they are proposing to do is very similar. The bank building's shape slightly different. It's a rectangular shape as opposed to the previous plan being more square in nature. This being Heartland Road over here, and this being M-59 to the south. The site would come in from the north, and then it would have connection to the Taco Bell site, which is located a little to the west, have the same layout with the drive-through windows in the backside of the bank building. And then there are some color renderings of the bank. This would be kind of the front of it here with the side. Again, the front with the other side, and then somewhat the back of the bank building. So the applicant is requesting site plan approval for this bank. It's again about 2,900 square feet with three drive-through windows. Generally, in the commercial district, drive-through windows require special use permit, but in this PD, they do not. This would be the only bank building with the drive-through window in this PD per the PD agreement. So with that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments you might have.
Okay. We'll turn it over to the applicant if you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to add.
Sure. I'm Michael Bojo. I'm the architect on the project. Troy did find out explaining it. It's essentially the same site as was approved 10 years ago, except for the configuration of building is a little bit different. So I have the material samples here. Again, they're pretty close to what they were 10 years ago. The brick, the shingles, the trim. So it's very close, but not quite the same.
Okay. Alright. Well, we'll do our review here. So if everyone wants to grab the staff review letter dated January everything up to that point is pretty much history. As Troy said, we'll be approving it. This won't not need to go to the board for either site plan or the special use for the drive-through. So about halfway down, we start with site plan application 17-019. You see that existing site conditions. We have the utilities, the water, the sewer, and the landscape berm. On the frontage of Highland Road is already installed. So flipping the page over to nine, we see impact assessment. There's no impact assessment necessary because that was done as part of the PD when the original development was proposed. A bank was proposed to be there. Traffic generation, nothing else required. Access and circulation. Troy, did you want to add anything about access and circulation?
So there is access coming in from the north here, and this is on other private land. This is probably one of the few sites in this entire PD that has to have access across somebody else's private land. So we've just asked that there be some sort of an access agreement in this location with this property owner, which is currently Ramco.
I was going to say, it's, that's a matter, it's probably pretty easy with Ramco.
Oh, yeah. So not that we're expecting any major issues with this, but that's just one of the details that we'll look to finalize that out. And then they're connecting to Taco Bell, which is generally good planning to have interconnection between sites. It tends to help minimize additional traffic on roadways, so.
So just a detail to be handled at a later date. Under requirements, lot size, PDs have minimum 20 acres, but this is part of a PD, so there really is no comment on that. Frontage. So now I'm up to top of page 10. Parking lot setbacks. They're meeting all the setback requirements. The building height is meeting the requirements, as in being 25 feet versus the maximum of 35 allowed. Lot coverage, again, there's nothing here to really be defined in anything that we need to comment on. Troy, I guess the only question now when we get to off-street parking, you have, yes, it meets the final requirements with a number of spaces, but some of them are not meeting the 20-foot length. So could you talk on that, please?
So on the, this is the proposed site plan, and it's these spaces that are in this area. I'm going to zoom Feet clear on this sidewalk here. This 18 feet is consistent. This is the prior plan, and if you zoom in in that that it was 18 feet then, seven-foot sidewalk in this location as well. So I just want to make sure that the planning commission is aware that that is one of the areas. Generally, we try to get 20-foot length parking spaces. This is an area that is 18 feet, but it's consistent with what had been approved in the past. And given the additional two feet overhang on the pathway, seems to be consistent with other decisions. Just want to make sure we point it out, though.
Okay. Any questions? Or everybody okay with that? Alright, good deal. Barrier-free parking spaces. They're meeting that requirement. Now I'm on packet page 11. Loading, very typical for what we've been doing with these types of facilities. There isn't really a big 10-by-50-foot loading space, not required for a bank with small deliveries. Dumpster enclosure, none. Lighting, looks like they're meeting all the requirements across the way. If everybody recalls, the pattern book calls for a different type of light fixture. Since the pattern book and the PD was done, they've gone to LED lighting in parking lots, so we've been approving those, even though they're not matching the part, the pattern book. I am now on page 12. Any questions on the lighting? If not, we'll move to the landscaping. Would appear from the notes here that they're meeting the requirements. Are there any questions or comments on landscaping at all? No? Okay. We're over to packet page 14. We're on the architecture. Meeting all the requirements. Certainly an attractive-looking building.
Yes, it is.
Noticed on the materials, the shingles weren't called out. Pedestrian access, they're meeting the requirement with the seven-foot. We're also approving a plan for a 35-foot flagpole, which is permitted. That is on page 15.
Yeah, there was no real schematics on the flagpole. It was just shown on the plan, so just kind of want to highlight what the ordinance requires so that both the applicant and the planning commissioner are aware. There's nothing opposing to the flagpole, but we just didn't have other information, so.
Just have to keep it out of the way of the ITC wires.
Is the question, "Flagpole lighted?"
Yes.
Rather quick one here, but are there any other questions for them? Probably helps that it's been reviewed before and approved.
Yep. The only one I have is that I, if it was not, the fact that it's in the PD, I guess I'd have a little concern about the 18-foot parking stall. But since then the PD, I don't really see too much of a problem with it. But I do have a question. Is that, didn't the ORC start working on something about the length of parking stalls because of the extra wide sidewalks? So we're kind of trying to address that issue anyway, right?
Well, is that in the three things you're working on now, though, or is that just on the list?
It's on the list.
It's on the list, but yeah.
We've actually talked about it once in the me, probably trying to establish priorities.
Right.
So, alright. That's all I had a comment about.
Any other comments? Tom, anything?
No.
Sue?
No.
Joe? Motion on the bottom of packet page number 15.
I move to approve site plan application number 17-019. A request to amend the previously approved plans for Heartland Town Square Plan Development to construct an approximate 2,900 square feet Flagstar Bank with three drive-through windows. Approval is subject to the following conditions. Applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noting in the planning department's memorandum dated January 18, 2018. On the construction plan set, subject to administrative reviews, approval is subject to the following conditions. Applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noting in the planning department's memorandum dated January 18, 2018. On the construction plan set, subject to administrative review by the planning staff prior to the issuance of a land use permit. Two, the applicant shall provide a shared driveway easement, which is subject to township approval. Applicant complies with any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director, Township, Engineering Consultant in Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority Fire Marshal.
Okay, we have a motion to approve site plan application number 17-019 for Flagstar Bank from Commissioner Voit, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnae, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do they have plans of starting soon, do you know? Have there been any discussion at all?
Yeah, they want to start, we're going to get the construction going then.
Okay.
By then it'll probably be late spring, early summer, or this or so. It's definitely a 2018 project.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Very.
I guess we can move past call to the public, since we have no one here unless you'd like to come forward.
Do you want to start?
We will give you the opportunity. Planner's report. Troy, do you have anything this evening?
Just to let you know, we have had some meetings on that Newberry project. I, in fact, met with the developer today talking about water system and stuff. So we are in the process of reviewing the plans, and that project will probably be coming back in the near future. We've still got a ways to go. This is a big project. There's a lot of pieces to this, and it's not ready to come back to you yet, but I can't give you a timetable either, but just to let you know, that is in the works.
Did he, did they, did Newberry, I think, acquired the property to the
West.
West.
Well, I don't know if he's acquired it, but he at least has some sort of interest in.
Interest in it? Okay. So is that, when he comes back, is that the plan?
Yep.
Okay. Are you guys meeting with him soon?
We, we did, probably about a month ago.
Yep.
And he, he took that additional 40 acres, I believe it is, and incorporated into his plan.
Yep.
He had the whole been chatting, but I don't know of anything other than
But I think they've been talking quite a bit.
Yeah. Anything else, Troy? Nope. Committee reports.
We have one today.
Alright.
So it's just, as you, as we've mentioned, we've been working on updating kind of through our list, different ordinances. And what we've been focusing on first is the landscape ordinance. We talked about the priority, what to start with. So it's just, it's just a little bit of an FYI on where we're at with that. Been meeting with Martha for about a couple months now. We've been really looking hard at the ordinance and stepping back and, you know, saying, what's the big goal here to improve our landscape ordinance? And number one, we want to make it simpler. We're finding, especially when Martha got on board and she was trying to interpret when people would bring in plans, to interpret our ordinance. She herself is having trouble following it. We have categories where sometimes they'll overlap. And so spending a lot of time counting up this and that, and we thought, this is just too much, and it's not clear to her, it's not clear to anyone. That's one goal. Another was that we did start studying other ordinances as well. Probably looked at 20 different communities and ordinances just to see what they were doing. Things like, we had questioned, should we have irrigation be required? Because those were some questions that we talked about when we looked at different standards, if we were, you know, if more communities did that. So we looked at that as well, some of, you know, our requirements all across the board. We wanted to improve our diagrams. So we'll have all these rules, and then there's a diagram or an exhibit, but it's not clear. It's not even, actually the diagrams we have aren't even shown correct. So that's another goal. So we'll help when we talk about what's required to really show a good example. So we're hoping to work on those as well. We're trying to reduce some requirements that we thought were beyond what we're really needed, such as, I know we've already talked about this around monument signs. Should we have foundation landscaping? Is that really needed? You know, our opinion is most other communities don't require it. That's the business's or whoever's identification is, it's their display. They're showcasing their business. If they want to add plants around their sign, go for it. We didn't feel that was necessary. We've already talked about around the dumpster enclosures. Do we need that? Most communities don't require it. We've got a nice brick wall, you know, and enclosure. Do we need another layer of plantings? We also, there's, there's a part in the ordinance that says that the developer could provide 25% above. That was one we checked to see if other communities had, and they didn't. We looked at, I've expressed some concern about like the mulch, the amount of mulch out there that's bare without, you know, infill of plants, and all of a sudden, it's just a bunch of weeds. We've talked about that. So we've talked about ways to describe how full the bed should be. So it's just not mulch. Because we just recently looked at like the Alavita plan. And so if you can picture the whole parking lot island, they had 10 daylilies in it. That was it. So we got it. We thought, how can we define it and make it more clear? So we're come, we've been studying that, how to make that clear. But, you know, that, it's, there's no coverage there, but we don't describe that yet. Also, some areas where, within parking lots, we've been stepping back to say, what's required in all the parking lot islands? We had cited and asked people to go look out at Meyer Parking Lot. You know, all the maintenance involved. If you go over to Rural King, those large parking lot islands are full of shrubs, but shrubs and weeds and that. And where do we really need plantings? So we're stepping back and saying, where, what's the intent of a parking lot landscaping? And we've looked at different communities. Number one, just for education, is with the purpose of the parking lot islands mostly is to shade the parking lot. That's the idea from most ordinances. Most ordinances don't even describe that all the parking lot islands need to have shrubs and ground cover. They talk about trees. So we started stepping back and say, well, where should, how many shrubs and ground cover should be in the lot? So we're studying that as well and comparing. And I think we've come up with a good solution to minimize the amount, but use them where they're needed. So, so, you know, as you can hear from me, that we're really stepping in and looking at it holistically. One thing, though, that I kind of pressed onto Martha about, and we're stepping back and looking at, is the requirement of having a landscape architect prepare the drawings. There's many reasons for this. It's night and day different on what Martha is reviewing when a landscape architect does it versus an engineer. She's spending so much time updating the plans, and they're not achieving the intent. That's the big thing. You know, we talk about a naturalistic this or that, and you've heard me, you know, always comment in these meetings that design intent isn't met. So by stepping back and reducing the requirements in all these areas we've described, but then asking that they have a landscape architect, it's going to more than offset the cost of having another professional involved. And we really feel, you know, that it will make a big difference for our community. We've looked at, and we'll have support of how many communities require that, and we can all decide. We're going to bring this back first to our review committee. We'll come up with a draft. It's all redlined, so we can sort through the updates that we're recommending. Once we get through that, we'll bring it back to here. But that'll be one big, that's kind of the one big overriding idea is if we could get someone licensed, we just feel the quality of the plans are going to be better, the design's going to be better.
You're saying the developer hires somebody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Just trying to understand where you're saying.
They would hire a licensed or registered landscape architect. Nobody, I mean, there's about like 10, 12 communities in our area that require it. But I believe if that happened, that whole review process is going to go so much smoother. So we're going to get a lot. And I'm not finding fault. I mean, the engineers are trying, and the architect is
Developer having to hire another professional.
So when you say that, so like when the engineer does, you know, the fee, you know, I'll do the landscape, I'll do this, he's still charging them a fee for landscape. But when you hire another professional, I can't tell you how much more, but it's not a lot more. But by us simplifying this and, you know, reducing other requirements, we're far compensating for that by far.
Because, I mean, just from a township board perspective?
Yeah.
That'll be, that will be the question
Yep.
that the board members will look at. I mean, are we burdening our developers with more, having to incur more costs? And if we can show that we're not actually holding, what we're basically requiring them to do is, it's, it's the old story. There's never enough time to do it right the first time. There's always enough time to do it right the second time. And it usually costs more money, and that's kind of what you're saying here.
Yeah.
If they did it right the first time, when they had, had a landscape architect come in and do it, it wouldn't take so long to go through and then have to spend more time on it.
And that's one reason. But between all the different, we're backing off a lot of requirements.
Yeah.
We're going to far more, you know, compensate.
I think, I think that's two of the trade-offs you should bring up at the meeting you can use is, one is, we're reducing their costs upfront by eliminating some of the ordinance, reducing some of the ordinance. It's for them, okay, their requirements. The other thing is, you know, they're paying Martha a lot more money to spend a lot more time on a, on a drawing, on a development plan that she really needs to, just because it's not right.
Right.
And then she'll have to do it a second time or a third time.
There's times where fourth, fifth, and sixth time going through this.
Yeah, so that's
You guys just see it when it's, when it's kind of done.
Yeah.
We got here to, to reach out to planning commissioners such as Commissioner Grissom and I. We spent a lot of time working on this and, and finally decided, let's seek, how have you done this? What have you done in these sections? And let's go out to these sites. And so I had Martha go out with Commissioner Grissom and say, what, what are you doing with this section here? How is that? Show us some sites where this was implemented. And, and I think it's kind of caused a little more technical review of the landscaping. And as Commissioner Grissom has pointed out, that, you know, maybe we, maybe we should change some of that stuff, so.
Well, I think the important thing is put it together.
Yep.
Bring it forward.
Yep.
If it's got less, if it's going to reduce burden on plant materials and maintenance.
Yep.
And it's going to cost them 1,000 or 2,000 more upfront, and we get the intent, it's all just part of the explanation. Let's see what you're talking about.
Right.
And so, you know, I would agree on, on everyone's count, you know, with, with the engineer having to redo, 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 let's say, and Martha having to spend additional time going over it, and then in the big picture, holding up other projects maybe because she has extra time invested in that. I think it's, it's a good idea to follow through with that ideas.
Have you looked at landscaping from a, you know, like a certain voluntary things that, I don't know how we could incorporate it. I don't want to make it a requirement. But we live in, you know, two different watersheds, and there's an opportunity for rain gardens and impervious surfaces and things like that. Are we looking at that as?
We've put in some language. That's a good question. Yes, we have put some language in for that, as well as how irrigation is done. That, you know, what, more water efficient and things like that as well. We're putting some verbiage for that.
So a couple things that maybe is a little bit more than, that needs to be looked at, but more and more communities who are trying to control the amount of stormwater that might end up in, in areas that they're not supposed to, have developed ordinances. And part of the ordinances just deals with how you, how the water gets away from, you know, the impervious surfaces versus impervious surfaces. And there's all kinds of materials. But they've been, by managing that, they also give credit, give a certain amount of credit. If you do certain things like this, maybe there's something else we, we would be willing to do.
Right.
You know, I'm not, and, you know, you can think of a lot of things like density or, or elimination of certain requirements that, or setbacks or something like that, which you wouldn't normally do if, you know. So anyway, that's something I was just wondering if you were thinking about.
Yep. We were looking at that. And then other credits are even preserving trees. You know, we talk about it as it's a good thing to do, but now it can be an exchange for what, you know, you can use an existing tree for account for how many new trees.
Doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen, but at least we can give, you know, an incentive.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, probably that would, as you know, when you start moving dirt.
No, yeah. But they're, right. So we're just, we've stepped back. We've done a lot of homework, looking at other ordinances, you know, trying to make this simpler, more clear, but also provide the overall vision and goal of what we're trying to do for our.
So if you have a shade tree, if that's the goal is to cool the
The pavement.
The pavement, which is, you know, causes all kinds of other issues. But if we're trying to cool the pavement, and the idea really is to move towards, you know, maybe larger trees as opposed to these little spindles that don't ever grow or do anything.
You've noticed that?
Yes. And maybe, maybe that's Yes. And maybe, maybe that's, in doing that, we, we eliminate the number. Is that a possibility?
Of the trees?
Having more trees that are bigger.
Species. You know, you can, right. So the deal with the trees, at least right now, what they think with horticultural wise, once you go about, above a tree that's about a three-inch caliper, it doesn't do as well. It's harder for it to adapt. It's like us getting older, harder for us to adapt. We find up to about a three-inch size, they're, they move well, they grow better. But it is all about the size of the area we put them in and how we treat them. That's really telling the story.
And I think one of the things that I read in the memo here is the parking lots and the trees. And I do recall, 10 years ago, when we did some training, that was what the parking lot trees were for.
For shade.
They're talking about options of taking the front rows in the parking lot that are, the islands that are closest to the front of the store, let's say, those would have shrubbery and landscaped. As you moved out into the parking lot, they could be sod, they could be grass.
Be grass.
And tree. So we can get rid of the shrubbery so that they can just have their mowing contractor do it weekly. That's one of the things that's in here. And I'm interested to see the whole package of everything that you're talking about. We did that with Imagine Theater.
Thanks for remembering, because that's exactly what we did. What, when you walk out, if you can picture walking out of a shopping mall, you know, you walk out of stores and you go out to your car, that first row of islands, when you're visualizing the whole center, if you can put shrubs in those, it screens the mass of all the pavement. But once you get into the lot, we're saying we don't need to have all those shrubs out there. But you want to provide that kind of perimeter ring to just kind of screen, just like we require driving up and down M-59, looking at parking lots. Trying to minimize the view of all pavement from the perimeter.
Lion Township, if you go to, I think it's Lion Town Center.
Is that the one on 96?
First thing they did was, they put that, and I just noticed it the other day when I was at Lowe's. And they've grown up now. It's all those bushes all the way.
Yes, that's exactly.
That's what you're talking about.
Those are in Evergreen.
Evergreen.
Yep. And that just minimizes that huge lot. But once we're in it, I, we didn't feel there's a need to have all those shrubs internally. Just get the trees for the shade.
Trees for the shade, and the green helps break it up if it's grass versus allowing it to just be rocks.
Yes.
Or pavement.
You know, and so we're looking at the big ideas, trying to step back and say, what's most important?
I, I look forward to seeing it. We've heard enough of, and we've seen enough plans where we've thought maybe they were a little over landscaped.
Yeah. Here's, here's another.
And if this is an opportunity to visit that, I mean, we can all go through them and have discussions.
Right. Here's, here's another example. It says that when you've got, like, your residential development, and you drive in the drive to the whole development, how they'll have a boulevard island right there, they require that that has shrubs and ground cover and trees. And we're like, why do we need the shrubs and ground cover? Could be crowned lawn with some nice trees. You know, why? So we're just kind of stepping back and say, where do we need, you know, and what do we need? Anyway, there's a lot of examples, but we're just, now that we have this opportunity, we really want.
Well, hopefully you'll bring pictures to help us understand visually what you're trying to accomplish when you guys bring it forward. And I think those can help sell the verbiage.
Yep. As well as we'll improve some of the diagrams.
And maybe when this comes back, we'll do it as a work session.
Okay.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot.
There's a lot there.
Right.
So something, something just on that note that comes to mind is Pleasant Valley Road coming south of 59 where Newberry, Newberry will end up.
Yep.
There are these big mature oak trees along the shoulder of Pleasant Valley Road.
Right.
And so if credit can be given to leave those and have a buffer maybe instead of, it almost seems like a ways to tear down what's existing, that these 150-year-old trees, it would provide great shade. Now, this isn't the parking lot setting that we're talking about so much, but I just think in the, maybe the credit area, that would maintain some of the country charm, right? The look that I think we're all striving for here. And maybe that's in, you know, I don't know that that exactly has been talked about, but that's something that comes to mind.
Right.
Well, one of the things, if we do that, and they start changing the grade and the trees dying, I'd like to know what our, what our recourse is.
You're right, you're right, Larry.
It was like that with, you know, there was a whole, you have some pretty good trees along Old 23, right there where the Kroger is.
Yep, you're right.
And when they start moving dirt, they'll, they pretty much all.
Well, and, and all I'm saying, what I'm saying, not all, but what I'm saying is, if we're going to give credit for that, for example, keep that tree, and you don't have to plant 10 others. But if that one dies in a few years because of that, what, what happens? Now we have nothing.
Right.
So I'm not familiar with ordinances, how that takes care of that.
And the other thing you gotta worry about is when we start requiring sidewalk, and where the sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
You know, I, I want to see those things preserved as well. I don't know what the site plan's going to look like when they come in, and there's.
Are they close to the road he's meant to? That's the other one. They want to come in and put a new road and ditch it and everything else, and they're going to tear them down. The road commissioner will tear it down.
No, I, I don't know about that, but it looks to me, there may be some storm drainage underneath that road. There may be some catch bases that are collecting. There could be. We would have to look at that. We should really, as part of it, because we may be okay on that, but, you know.
I think you have. You're just trying to use it as an example.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and I'm just trying to say.
No, I.
Detective.